This meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. The invocation tonight will be given by Vice Chairman Berkey Jennings and the pledge of allegiance will be by Commissioner Judy Moose.
Please stand if you're able.
About your heads. Board, we are meeting tonight to conduct matters of business for Alexander County. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance tonight. Amen.
I'd like to mention one thing before Judy does the pledge of allegiance. Jim Blackburn, who was a former legal counsel for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, passed away suddenly with a heart attack. And I just wanted to offer sympathy to his family and friends and those of us on the council that have worked with him.
Attention. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our, it's not really on the agenda, but the Commissioner's report is, does any Commissioner have a report they'd like to give? No one?
Well, I'd just like to commend our Alexander Central High School girls and, and boys' basketball team on an outstanding season. Our, our boys did extremely well, our girls did extremely well, and they're to be commended. It's been a long time, a long time, since we've had a winning season in girls' basketball. And those young ladies, the coaching staff in Alexander Central are to be commended on the job that they did, and I just want to commend them on an outstanding season.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Yoder. The adoption of the agenda, we do have one thing to add, and I would make a motion that we add. I'm sorry, I missed one.
Sorry.
We, we are going to do special recognitions now. I got ahead of myself. Thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
I'll call on Commissioner Yoder for, personally.
Well, it's a distinct honor that I have to bestow upon the gentleman from this county the key to the county. I have, I've known him since 1973 when I came to Alexander County. I first met him in the courtrooms of Alexander County, maybe before that, but I just remember him being in the courtroom. He was my neighbor for a while, go to the same church, and he's an outstanding golfer. Most of you probably know that about him. Not only is he a great attorney, but he's an outstanding golfer, and he brought notoriety to this county several years ago when he won the seniors championship. And he has been a tremendous asset to the people of Alexander County, to the Titlewell Savings Bank, and he has served as their attorney for, Richard, I don't know how many years it is, I, I won't say, but I know that it's been many years, and on Friday, those folks recognized him and honored him in a way that they should have. He's been an outstanding contribution, contributor to their business and to the Titlewell Savings Bank. Not only has Richard been an attorney in this county, but Richard Waltney has served on several different boards. He's worked well with the community and helped bring good things to this county. He's been a vital part, I know, in the golf course at Brushy Mountain for years. He was very active and made sure that it stayed afloat, and it's done real, real well. And with people like Richard's leadership in this community, that's what makes this community great. And he's been a friend, he's been my lawyer a couple times, and on top of that, now he's a grandfather, got a couple grandkids back there with him tonight, I think. And Richard, if you'd come forward, please, if you don't mind, bring your family with you, and...
This is an honor for me to present this to you because, you know, I never could beat him in golf, I always got to watch him. And even as, I tried hard, but I never was that good. If you folks would slide around here with us, come on up here, you know, and stand wherever you want to, and shake your hand. I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your family, appreciate your work at church and everything.
One, two, three. One, two, three. You've got it. You've got it. Okay. One, two, three.
I'm not prepared. I'm not prepared.
Mr. Chairman, that's unusual when you see an attorney who's not prepared to make a few remarks, but Richard has done a lot of things, if I can add, just a little bit, because he helped organizations and individuals in the county that needed help at the time, and I want to thank him because once upon a time, Richard gave me an example of how to handle unbending bureaucratic agencies when they need to be handled. And he was doing it out of charity. And Richard, I appreciate the things you've done along the way, not just as an attorney, but to help people who needed help at the time. Thank you for what you've done.
Our second recognition tonight is to a gentleman that, that I've known for several years now, and my family has known him for many, many years. He's, he's been their attorney in real estate transactions for, I, I remember when I was a kid, I heard the name Jerry Campbell. Jerry Campbell, we need to go see Jerry Campbell and take care of that. And I have the privilege of attending church with Jerry and have gotten to know him, know him very well over the last few years. And another thing I will tell you about Jerry, his grandson and my daughter are just almost inseparable, and have been since they were, you know, old enough to, to stand up. And that, just seeing them spend time together, and we, we talk a lot after church, and I really enjoy Jerry and his wife. And I'd also like to ask Commissioner Jennings to say a few words and, and help me present this award to Jerry, because he's known Jerry for many years as well. I do want to add one thing that, about our new Rocky Face Park. It has come to my attention that Jerry was one of the first people, if not the first, to mention that that place would make a good, good Alexander County park. And it's taken thirty, forty years for us to do that, but it's finally coming to fruition. And thank you for your leadership in this county, Jerry. You've done a lot.
Let, let me make a few comments before I go to the podium. Now, what I'm about to say may sound like I'm going into the Jennings and Burke family genealogy, but that's not the case. I'm going to make a point by telling both of these stories. My dad, Ray Jennings, was an attorney in town for many years and died at the age of sixty-two, but before he did die, he brought Richard Waltney in as an associate in his practice, and so therefore, Richard was able to practice law in Taylorsville. And so, Richard, congratulations on your longevity and your fruitful career. Jerry Campbell is an even more interesting case, and I'm not saying it's, it detracts anything from what Richard has done, but Jerry and my father grew up together and played on the first football team at Taylorsville High School in nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-eight. Jerry's sister and I, Sally, went to high school together and, and grew up. But what I'm about to say is really the, the meat of the story. Many, many times Jerry told me of when he first came to Taylorsville and started practicing law in the nineteen fifty-eight period, my grandfather Hayden Burke was still alive, and he was still practicing law, into his nineties. And Jerry said that anytime Hayden Burke would come up to you to shake your hand on the street, this is, this was his greeting. How are you living your life? It wasn't hello, good morning, good afternoon, it's how you're living your life. And that always stuck with me. A couple of other things, little footnotes. Jerry was with my grandfather the day he died in the courtroom on his ninety-fifth birthday, so he practiced law well over seventy years. But the reason I, I made the comment of how are you living your life, I think both Richard and Jerry have lived their life in an exemplary fashion by giving back to their community. So what my grandfather said to Jerry, maybe it stuck, because it certainly sticks with me every day that I think about him, but it just sticks with me every day that that's what we all should do, and so Richard and Jerry have done that, and they deserve the awards they're given tonight. So congratulations again to both of you.
Berkey? Come on up, Jerry, and bring your family. Says the Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this key to the county upon Jerry Campbell in recognition of fifty-three years of assistance to the citizens of Alexander County through the practice of law and community involvement, nineteen fifty-eight to two thousand and eleven, presented March twelfth, two thousand and twelve. And it's well, well deserved, Jerry. Well deserved. Can we get a picture here of Mike? Here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more.
Mr. Chairman, while you're all sitting down, if you don't mind, I'd like to add one more thing about Jerry Campbell. He's been at the Presbyterian Church for, I don't know how many years, but one of the things that I know that's very dear to Jerry at the Presbyterian Church is the Boy Scouts. Jerry's always been a strong supporter of the Boy Scout troop there at First Presbyterian Church, and Jerry, you'd be commended on that. That's a job well done. Richard, I owe you an apology. I didn't read yours, and I apologize. I just got caught up in the moment of giving that to you, and I didn't read it, and...
That's quite all right. Thank you for the...
You're quite welcome. But Richard got the key to the county, and I, I've just got caught up in the moment there thinking about old times. I have to be honest, I really did, so, but I, I wanted you to know that, sir. Two fine, fine gentlemen that represent this county very well, folks. I can tell you that from years of knowing them. Straightly proud of both of you.
I want to make one comment. We were talking about a little bit earlier about attorneys, they practice law, and looking at these two attorneys, they came pretty close to getting it right. I think they kind of got past the practice stage, and appreciate both of them.
All right. Back to the adoption of the agenda. I want to, we have an addition, Budget Amendment Number Thirty-eight, and I make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Oh, yeah. So, does anyone have anything they want to say about Jerry or Richard?
Well, I would, I would like to say that from the time I was thirty-three years on, Richard and Jerry meant toward me and kept me out of a lot of trouble.
What kind of trouble was that?
And I thank them.
Appreciate y'all. Do y'all want to elaborate any on the trouble you kept Judy out of before you leave, or just leave that alone?
Here's, Ben, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that something unique to me is Jerry and I were in the third grade at school together. That goes back about as far back as you're going to go. And he was neat and organized back when he was like, third grade, nine years old, something like that, maybe ten. But anyway, was in third grade, and he was just a neat little guy then. And then Sir Richard Waltney has just become such a close friend of mine that one day I had a little bit of inner ear problem, and I thought, who will I call? So I called Sir Richard. He came to my rescue. Kind of a, a relationship that's been woven through the years.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Richard. Thanks, everybody. Anyone else? Okay, now we'll get to Budget Amendment Number Thirty-eight. You have that in front of you. I make that in form of a motion that we add Budget Amendment Number Thirty-eight to the agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Are you opposed?
No, I raised my hand.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. You're a little late. Okay, first item on the agenda is a public comment. Has there anyone signed up to speak? Okay. If you would, ma'am, come up and state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Drew Dull, and I live in Bethlehem Community. Do you need to specify your...
No, no, just...
Bethlehem, actually in Oliver's Landing. I came to you about sixteen months ago and talked to you about the Oliver's Landing Rivercrest Golf Course closing, potentially closing, and I want to talk to you about that again tonight. The history of who owns the golf course, which you may find interesting, is the golf course property has to be a golf course. It can't be sold for residential or anything. There are about six or seven owners now. They, by the way, they do, the owners live in Hickory, so they cannot vote for you one way or the other. But in the neighborhood of Oliver's Landing, we've got about a hundred and fifty-five homes and about a hundred and twenty-five lots, and all those people do live in Alexander County, of course, that's why I'm here tonight, and they do vote, and of course, they do pay real estate taxes to the county. The golf course is closed, it's closed effective October, and it really, the conversation tonight really doesn't matter whether it's closed, opened back up, or whatever. The economy's a little bit bad, we all know that, but it, but it could close, it could be sold, it could close again, or whatever. What we're looking for is some kind of minimum standard for upkeep of property, commercial property, specifically golf courses. I've talked to Seth Harris again, and I know you've got a solid waste ordinance that's, that you're drafting now. You've got a residential, I think, ordinance that you're going to be working on soon after that. Would like for you to look at putting in place a very simple ordinance for privately-owned recreational facilities, commercial businesses, however you word it, but it does need to have something specifically about recreational or golf courses in it. Let me, I went to City Hickory, Catawba County, because I know you mirror some of your ordinances after them. City Hickory does have that covered in their ordinances, and I've got copies of here, of it here for you. And they actually regulate what goes on with commercial properties through what they call their nuisance ordinance. And I put together a little petition about a week or so ago, I got about a half, a third of our residents signed it, and actually haven't even started to get it signed. But really, what I thought is, is why even bother to have it signed? It's sort of a no-brainer that if, if the golf course closes, the neighborhood's just going to go downhill from there, and once it does, people will not move to Alexander County. Let me read what I put together. It's a petition for Alexander County Commissioners to adopt an ordinance for the Bethlehem Community similar to ordinances in place by the City of Hickory. This nuisance ordinance will protect the property values of the Bethlehem Community. The golf course is currently closed, but the real issue is the maintenance of the property, whether the course is open or closed, and the impact closure will have on the health and safety of the residents living nearby. We would like ordinances in place that would address the height of grass and weeds to be maintained below twelve inches, and we don't feel like that's an unreasonable thing to ask. Rubbish, trash, rats, creatures in buildings, some of that, I think, is, might already be covered in some of your existing, but we do need to specifically talk about targeting ponds and things for stagnant water that will breed insects. This is a big issue for us, and I want to talk just a little bit about the financial implications, but first of all, I just want to send out, if you do not mind, I'll pass this out to you. Sort of what I put together again, it's, it's City Hickory's ordinances, so basically you could just copy them pretty much. You don't need all of those, because you've already got some of them covered, but again, I would like for you to consider that. Talking about the financial implications, two thousand and ten census, which you probably know most, the growth in the county was in older people moving into the neighborhood. I think we can probably credit a lot of that for the housing boom in Oliver's Landing over the last ten years. We know a lot of the younger residents are moving out of town, but you know, if you think about a retirement community, there's still a lot of people, even though the economy's bad, there's still a lot of people who can afford to retire, and especially in Oliver's Landing, a lot of those people are coming from out of state. We've got people from all over the U.S. Now, they can, they can come into the, to the area, they can certainly buy in Morse Ferry, fine houses about the same price, they pay about twice what the real estate property taxes are, or they could look to moving into Oliver's Landing, which of, of course, is less real estate taxes. Now, once the Realtors, because the golf course closed in October, once the Realtors stop bringing people to our neighborhood, once it grows up to a cow field or pasture, whatever, they're not going to be, in other words, if somebody opens it up, and then it's, it's mowed, and then it's not mowed or whatever, the Realtors would stop bringing them to Oliver's Landing, and then they will stay on the other side of the bridge. We've had, actually had three homes that have sold recently, so there are still Realtors bringing them by. You know, if you've got a good Realtor, and if the county commissioners can get behind us and put in some kind of minimum standard or minimum nuisance ordinance to, to just have something in place as a backdrop to help keep the grass twelve inches or lower. A good real estate agent can take Oliver's Landing, even though the golf course might be closed, and they can put a very good spin on a golf, closed golf course, because it's a great place to walk, it's a great place to bike, you don't have to worry about golf balls coming into your backyard. So we can turn a negative into a very positive, but, but that will not happen if it grows up in weeds. Just to talk a little bit about the financials, I mentioned earlier, we've got a hundred and fifty-five homes, we've got, and most of those are probably valued about four hundred thousand, that's probably an accurate guess. We've got a hundred and twenty-five lots for sale, and those are, those are probably appraised probably about sixty thousand dollars a lot through your real estate appraisals. And we will probably, if we're lucky, get twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, because it's going to be a fire sale, the bank owns sixty of them already, so we've got a hundred and twenty-five lots there. Now, your real estate revenue that you make off of a hundred and twenty-five lots, say it's sixty thousand, is a lot less than you're going to make at a hundred and twenty-five homes if we can keep the property selling, if we can keep the lots selling, have homes built. You're looking at seven or eight times the real estate property tax revenue that Alexander County is going to be able to bring in. I did some quick numbers on that, and a hundred and twenty-five lots at, you know, three hundred or four hundred dollars real estate taxes a year is about thirty-seven thousand dollars to the, to Alexander County. A hundred and twenty-five homes is going to be way over a half, a quarter of a million dollars. So we're talking generating tax revenue for, for the county. I know that this is something that's not on the, the top of your agendas, but it's, it's like this, the, the, the clock is ticking, and the grass is growing, and once things become to look in disarray and that it's in a, not a closed golf course, but an abandoned golf course community, then Oliver's Landing will not be bringing in future tax revenues like, like you may want them to. But I would like for your help on this, and I did get some names on the petition, like I said, I didn't even really try, because really, I, after, after worked on it a day or two, I said, you know, it's really, it really is a no-brainer. I can get you three, three hundred names, I can bring three hundred people to the meeting. But, I mean, it, it's more common sense about the economic impact for Alexander County and, and getting more people to move in and build and create some jobs here, and you're bringing, continue to bring in more money for real estate property taxes. So let me give you this, the names of the people who have signed, but I wish you would consider it, and who wants to comment on that?
Well, normally we don't make comments to public comment. Occasionally, we'll break that rule, but we will discuss this, and we'll get back to you.
Okay. I have emailed the, the information to Seth Harris, so he does have it. Just one more thing, like I said, if this goes on the back burner for a year or two and the real estate agents stop at that bridge at Morse Ferry, then once that happens, it's not going to be good for the community, it's not going to be good for the county. Appreciate you letting me talk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up and just state your name and your address, or...
I'm Billy Pressnell, this is my wife, Patricia. She is on a list for a kidney transplant. In the past few months, she's been to Winston and done all kind of scans and tests, and it come down to one last thing that she had to have, and that was a hepatitis shot. So she notified the Health Department, and they told her they would be sixty-five dollars each, which they give them, you know, in threes, and she's got Medicare insurance, and she's got a real good supplement, which is United Health. Well, the Health Department refused to take her insurance, so instead of having to pay nearly two hundred dollars for the shot, she went to her family doctor, and they, you know, give her a shot, Medicare pay. And what I'm saying is, why does something, why will they not accept good insurance when you go out there in the waiting room and it's full of people that's not from this country? They've got money, but they're not going to spend it. They getting this stuff free at the Health Department, and all I ask for either one of you to do at any special time, just go out in the parking lot and look what they're driving and parking out there, look at them, four and five thousand dollars worth of wheels and tires. driving and parking out there, look at them $4,000, $5,000 worth of wheels and tires, and you tell me why they turned her down.
For getting my shot.
Even though she had the insurance. I just don't understand that. We've lived here all our lives, we ain't been in no trouble, and, and, and it's a life and death situation with her because her kidneys is just, she's got 15%.
I've got 15% of kidney function in my kidneys.
And I, I have no idea about your particular case. I, I could not answer that question for you. Like I said, we normally don't make comments, but I will make this comment that we are hamstrung by state and federal regulations about what you just spoke about.
But she's got United Healthcare, which is a good insurance.
We want to know why they wouldn't accept my insurance for those shots that I got to have.
Can you, I can't tell you that, I, I have no idea, but we can, if you'll leave some contact information with us, we will have the county manager get back in touch with you with the answer of why that occurred. I do not know.
And just one other quick thing, Alexander County's got a wonderful recreation department. We didn't have it when I was growing up, I wish we had. You've got some good people running it, and 99% of the coaches is good coaches, but you've got a few that yells and screams and gets the kids so tore up, and I've even seen them crying, I've seen the coaches kicking buckets and, and have to go sit down, but get cooled off. And all I ask of the recreation department is let them umpires control the game. When they see them coaches doing that, if you have to, suspend them. And now, the recreation department is hurting for kids to play, they, I don't know what the parents, that we've been told would not let their kids play when they found out that these coaches was coaching. Like I say, it's only a small percentage, 99% of them are great coaches, and, but we owe that to these kids because when they get up out at bat and they're crying and they're scared they're going to make a mistake, all they need to do is just have a good time, win or lose.
I agree with you. We are actually not in charge of who those coaches are, that's in, that's the communities themselves that, that have their own recreation departments or organizations, and if that's occurring, they need to do a better job of who they're letting coach.
We've seen other people come to these games from other counties, and it, it will embarrass you when they see how some of these coaches is doing. And it's for the young people, it's not for these coaches to go out here and brag over a cup of coffee, who's won, and it's for these kids.
Well, our granddaughter is 14, just turned 14, and there's only seven in her age group that signed up, now the rest of them won't sign up.
And, and out of this group here...
And she wants to play ball, she's paid her dues.
A bunch of them, a bunch of them wouldn't, wouldn't sign up to play ball on account of the coaching situation. That's costing the county money, because you know, $40 a, a person. That's all we got, and I appreciate you letting us.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I wanted to ask more questions, but he wasn't letting me.
Okay.
Hanging up too much of your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Okay. Come on up.
Even though we didn't call ahead?
Yeah, that's fine.
Good. This will be brief.
Just state your name and community.
My name is Kathy Riddle, and I guess I'm from Taylorsville. Let's consider this the commercial for the evening. I'm here to invite all of you, the commissioners, the people in the audience, and the people who are listening, to come to the Friends of the Alexander County Library this Sunday. We will be having our first Community Voices presentation, and the person that's coming to speak is Jeremy Ayton. He was here in the county as a teacher until this past year. Last summer, he went to Turkey and Greece as a Fulbright scholar, and he's going to come and show his photos that he took on that trip. It will be very interesting, and many of us probably won't ever get to tour Greece and Turkey, so please come. 2:30, Sunday afternoon, Reformation Lutheran Church on West Main. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, item two on the agenda, Alexander County Notice of Public Hearing, where's my? The 2011 CDGBG Scattered Housing Program, I call Nancy Coley, the Western Piedmont Council of Government Community Development Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizens' comments before submitting the 2011 Scattered Site Housing Rehabilitation Program to the Department of Commerce, Community Investment and Assistance. These community development block grants are made on a non-competitive basis to each county every three years. All units or houses must be selected prior to submitting the application. The primary object of the CDGBG Scattered Site Program is to improve the housing conditions of very low-income households with incomes at or below 50% of the area median income. The total grant amount is $400,000, which includes CDGBG-funded $40,000 for administration and planning. In addition, counties can use $40,000 for an emergency repair local option project. And the houses for the emergency repair, thank goodness, do not have to be selected in advance. Alexander County's 2011 Scattered Site Rehabilitation Project includes this 400, uh, excuse me, this $40,000 emergency repair local option. The county is the lead entity to receive funds and is, and is required to work with all interested municipalities within the county. And of course, we have only one, the town of Taylorsville. And the town participated in this project and has representation on the Housing Selection Committee. Staff has verified the income and homeownership status, and Ken Holler, the Housing Inspector for the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and I visited each home and inspected the needed repairs. The applicants were rated by a priority ranking system based on the special needs of the household members, household income, and the estimated amount of rehabilitation needed to bring the house into standard condition. And I might add that all rehabilitation loan, they're loans, not grants. This is a grant to the county, but it's a loan to the homeowners, but they're no interest, deferred, forgivable loans, meaning as long as they live in the house, as long as the house is not sold, they do not have to pay any money back. The Housing Selection Committee met on Tuesday, March the 6th, and is recommending to you, the Board of Commissioners, that six low-income homeowners receive assistance from this program, and also included in the committee's recommendation are two alternates. In conclusion, the 2011 Scattered Site Housing Program will provide Alexander County an opportunity to use grant funding to address the county's needs for rehabilitation of low-income owner-occupied housing. And we're recommending that the Commissioners vote to adopt the authorizing resolution, which I believe's been presented in your packet, and to submit the 2011 Scattered Site Housing Program application to the Division of Community Assistance, Community Investment and Assistance. Do you have any questions?
I'm glad to see you found some folks that needed some assistance. I was afraid that it wasn't going to happen because of the rules and regulations were placed, placed on this.
I think the people are scared when they hear the word, they hear the word loan. They think they have to pay it back, and we try to explain to them that the only way they would ever have to pay any of it back, and it would only be a prorated portion, would be if they were to sell the house before the time was up. And the maximum amount of time that the deed of trust would be enforced is eight years. Of course, that's if we spend $20,000 or more. If we spend less than that, it's less than eight years.
So if they, if, if you spend more than $20,000 and they keep the house for eight years and do not sell it, the loan is forgiven completely and they do not owe one red cent back?
That's right. That's right.
I know that, but I was just...
You're just reiterating it, yeah.
Reiterating.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
It was mentioned in the cover says there are six low-income homeowners, and my list has five on it and two alternates.
One is...
Well...
Excuse me, one's on this front page.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had my hands over it.
I'm sorry.
One of the...
I counted six.
Okay. One, one of the applicants, the mobile home was just too bad for us to even to consider doing any, well, in fact, we looked at it for an urgent repair application. And when Mr. Holler went out there, he said, "There's just not enough here to, to fix." And so they, they have been, we are recommending that we do what's called clearance and reconstruction. In other words, get rid of it and replace it. And then there are five for rehabilitation and two alternates.
Nancy, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
What requirements does the applicant have on maintaining the property once it's rehabilitated? And does Western Piedmont Council of Governments representative inspect the property to make sure it's...
We have no contract to do that, so no, I mean, I hate to be selfish and say we only work under a contract, but...
So the money's given upfront and there's no monitoring after the fact?
No, yeah. And some of, and some of the past documents, it's had that we would, you know, periodically inspect it, but I don't know that that's been done, simply because we, the county doesn't have staff to do that, and, and, and we just don't do that. But that might be something you want to look into to check back with the people on whose homes we've done in the past. Prior to, six years ago, these grants were competitive, and you had to select the houses in advance, and then you submitted it, and it was competitive, because I, I remember back in the 90s, we had two houses that had no indoor, they had a minimal amount of indoor plumbing, a kitchen sink, that was it. And it didn't get funded, and we were just flabbergasted, and I don't know if you remember, but some of the high school students got involved and called it brothers' keepers and, and a used mobile home was purchased for one of the people, and we resubmitted it the next year and it did get funded. And then after that happened, and I don't know the timing, but the state came out with a entitlement, if you want to call it that, in that each county, every three years, gets an opportunity for this. You don't have to accept it, and I don't know how, I don't, I've never found out from the people at the state how many counties don't participate, but I'm glad they did it this way and made it equitable, so to speak. Of course, we get the same money that a larger county would get, so I'm sure they wouldn't think it was equitable, but anyway, I'm just, we're just thankful for it. And, and I really was disappointed that we didn't have a greater number of people apply. Don't know why, I mean, we, we utilize the newspaper, we utilize the radio and the government channel, and I don't...
We utilize the internet also, there's a lot of people sending emails out trying to get the word to people, to let their people and their churches and communities know. And I, I think that this time, there was probably more information out there than what I think we've ever had in the past, really, based on everything that was done, and you were on the radio, I think, once or twice, and I think there were a lot of things done in order to try to get that information out there, but some of the folks that you talked to and let them know, I mean, I know you talked to some of them, but because of the situation with the income being so low, I mean, some of them just didn't qualify because of the income.
The lady in Raleigh who was over this, she said they were going to look at that again, because community development, community development block grants can assist up to people whose income are 80, is 80% and below, but they target it to 50% below. So we're leaving out some of these people that's 50 to 80, and so I'm hoping that in another three years, they, they will up that, because it's, you know, the, the, the income guidelines are set by HUD, and the state just decided they were going to target lower. One of the problems that I, people would call and I would say, "Do you own your house?" And I, I, do, you know, "Do you own the land that it sits on? Is the deed in your name?" And of course, we can look all that up on the internet, so while they were on the phone, I would look up the tax card, look up the deed, and many times, it wasn't in their name, it was in the brother's name or somebody. So, that was another obstacle, was finding people who actually owned the houses. So, income, homeownership, I guess were the two, you know, main, and, and then we did give priority to people who were elderly, who were handicapped or had a handicapped person in their household, even though that's not a requirement of the grant. In years past, we've made it a requirement. I called Raleigh, I said, "Is, you know, I can't see in the application guidelines that that's a requirement," and she said, "It's not, you just, you, you, your county just did that." So, we, we have a single parent in here who works for the county school system and qualified with the number of, of course, the amount of income that you can make depends on the size of your household, so she has some children, so, okay. Any other questions?
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move a closed public hearing.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the, authorize this resolution certification for the 2011 Community Development Block Grant Scattered Site Housing Program.
Got a motion? Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item number three on the agenda is the Annual Community Child Protection Team Report. I call on Holly Young of the Children's Services, she's the Children's Services Program Manager.
Good evening. I am Holly Young, the Children's Services Program Manager for the Alexander County Department of Social Services, and I am here to talk to you about the Community Child Protection Team Report, our end-of-year survey for 2011. You should hopefully already have a copy of that and had an opportunity to review it, so I will try to be brief. I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of things, and actually did some statistics of my own prior to coming this evening, so I could put some of these things in perspective for you. One of the things that the Community Child Protection Team is tasked to do is to identify gaps in services in the community, as well as what our primary issues are, which your next agenda item, I think, is going to tie in very well to, to this presentation. During the course of the year, and we report on the annual year, not the fiscal year, so this would have been from January, or yes, January 1st of 2011 until, excuse me, December 31st of 2011. We reviewed 26 cases, which were brought to our team by either social work staff or folks who worked in other areas in the community, be it the school system, the juvenile crime DJJDP folks. We allow anybody that's a part of our team to bring cases that they're concerned about or, or families that they're concerned about to talk about to see if we can plug in services. As you can see from this report...
May I interrupt you just one second?
Yes, sir.
I hear agencies, what about the public? If someone suspects abuse, neglect, drug abuse, is there a process that can be utilized with your agency?
Any, North Carolina is a mandated reporting state, and any person in the state that suspects a child is being abused, neglected, or is dependent, excuse me, is mandated to contact the Department of Social Services to report their concerns. They don't have to be able to prove what their concerns are, only have to give us or tell us about those concerns. They can call us, they can email us, they can write us, there's a social worker available 24 hours a day. There's a social worker available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to take reports. And we do get reports, all hours of the day, at night, and on holidays and weekends. But yes, there is. That is the process for making a report. Most of the reports that we receive at our agency come to us by phone. And we have a pretty strong advocacy in the community of folks who understand what those reporting requirements are and are very good about letting us know when they're concerned about children in the community. To follow up on that question, the folks that sit on this protection team, our members... The majority of the members of the team are from this community. Some are not. But all of the members on the team work in our community, in the school system, with mental health, law enforcement, public health. We have a very, very strong participation and just a broad spectrum of members on our protection team. And we are blessed to have those folks come in one time a month and sit down and meet with us to talk about the concerns or the issues that we're facing as a community that involve children and their families. We have daycare folks that are represented on that team as well. But again, just very fortunate to have, probably for a county this size, just an amazing participation rate. And you'll notice on page three, that number 10 in our report that we have to submit to the state asked us to identify people who are mandated by the state to attend this meeting who do not on a regular basis. That has never been an issue for us. Our meetings are well-attended by all areas that are mandated to attend those meetings in the community. And we're very thankful for that because we know that takes time out of their day as well. But I assure you that the professionals and those community members that serve on that team are dedicated to the protection of children in this county. They are passionate about that.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The three issues that we identified as the primary issues that we are addressing and continue to see a pattern of are substance abuse by parents and caretakers, parent-child mental health issues, and also domestic violence. Substance abuse continues to be the primary reason we are involved with families in our community where there are concerns or reports of abuse, neglect, or dependency. And I went back to calculate that number for actually the fiscal year. I did not calculate on the calendar year. But of the 604 reports that we received in 2010, 2011 that were accepted for investigation, 47 percent of those reports involved people or families with allegations concerning substance abuse issues. Another theme that is occurring with that issue is the abuse of prescription drugs and that that is becoming more and more of an issue for the families that we work with all the time. We are seeing some resurgence of methamphetamine in our community and working with those families as well. But many of the families we work with, the adults in those homes, are prescription drugs is the primary drug of choice and is very difficult to work with. Also, you'll see the parent-child mental health component and the domestic violence component. 18 percent of the cases that we worked with, families we worked with from July 2010 until June 2011, involved domestic violence-type situations. And 11 percent of those cases involve both substance abuse and domestic violence. There's a misnomer among the general public, I believe, that domestic violence and substance abuse go hand in hand. But what we have learned is that that really is not true. Those things occur separately a lot of the times. But what we also know is that those two issues lead to lots of undercurrents of other types of abuse and neglect, like improper care and supervision, injurious environment for kids. We know that the impact that these issues has on the children that we work with, school performance, the ability to access community resources and positive supports. You can make a list that goes on and on for days about how that impacts the children and the children in their homes. One of our primary concerns or resources that we have had an ongoing struggle with has been mental health in our community. There are two primary providers in the community, one being Donlin Counseling Services, the other one being RHA. RHA is the indigent services provider. RHA is the service that we most often use for our adults. They work with them and do a great job. They have really struggled to maintain staff and it has been difficult for them to keep up with the pace that we... The demand that's in this county for the need for their services. And I'm sure that most of you are aware of the struggle in the mental health system to assure that folks get the services that they need and get them in a timely manner.
Can I have you back up just maybe a couple of paragraphs here? Abuse of prescription drugs.
Yes, sir.
When you suspect that or know that, do you turn that over to law enforcement to investigate?
It depends on what's going on in the home. We have to look at that holistically, the entire picture. Sometimes those cases will come to us because a person will be caught driving while impaired and not necessarily under the impairment of alcohol, but under the impairment of some type of prescription drug. We work many of our cases in conjunction, hand in hand, with law enforcement, some substance abuse cases. But if we have a concern that there is illegal activity going on, we are mandated to report that to law enforcement. And we actually have a 24-hour mandate to report that to them. We are supposed to immediately contact them if there is an abuse-type situation and then required to give them written notice within 24 hours of receiving any report of that. Many cases, we go out on together, work together, and have a really good partnership there. They are very supportive of the work we do and we try to let them do their job and they let us do ours, but we have to work together as well. And I think we've built a really good partnership and are doing that.
From my perspective, I know a little knowledge is a dangerous thing. But I just happened to watch a special on CNBC, maybe a month ago, about the explosive growth in the abuse of prescription drugs, number one, but the ability to get prescription drugs without having an illness. And of course, they were doing undercover investigations, I think, in South Florida. And so, I just wanted to make sure there was a link between your agency and our local law enforcement.
Most definitely. And I'm sure you're going to hear a lot more about that when Ms. Wisnake comes up for your next agenda item. She's probably going to tell you all, probably answer some of those questions as well. I did also want to let you know that since the beginning of this fiscal year, so since July 1st of 2011, we have actually taken or brought into our custody 24 children. We currently have 47 children in foster care. And of that 47, that number of children, 58 percent of those kids are in our custody because of a substance abuse issue in the home. Also, just to follow up on some of the things that we are doing, you can see from this report, there's a list of the folks who participate in our meetings and some of the things that we've done during those meetings. But also, just to let you know that one of the things that we have been working on, our agency, but also this team, was the rollout of the DSS website where information can be found about making child abuse reports, information about foster care, becoming a foster parent. There's all kinds of information on that website. So, we're very excited to get that out to the public so they have a place to go and see that information for themselves. We also have some material that airs on the government channel in relation to some of the work that we do in Child Protective Services. And I will be glad to answer any other questions you might have.
Holly? What Berkey had brought up, Commissioner Jennings had brought up a few minutes ago about... It is North Carolina law that if you suspect... I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. If you suspect a child is being abused in North Carolina, you must report that. And that's not only, you know, North Carolina law, that is, you know, your morals. If you're a Christian, you have to... You should report that. If you're not, you know, you should report that. It is looking out for the health and safety of a child. You could change that child's life, you could save that child's life. And you should not look at it as it's none of my business. If you suspect a child is being abused, it is your business and you should report it.
And I think just to reiterate that, it is our job to protect the children in this community. It's also our job to keep families together. And if you have a concern about a child or children who are being abused or neglected, it's not just our job to go out there and remove that child from that situation. It's our job to go out there and put services in place that can help that family become healthy and stay together.
Right. It is... You're not trying to take the child away from the parents or the family. You're just trying to look out for the child and protect the child. That's your number-one priority. And you will try to help them rebuild that family if that be the case.
Our mantra, so to speak, to the community and the folks that we work with is, "If you have a concern, pick up the phone and call. We'll be glad to talk to you about that concern." And if it does not rise to the level statutorily of a report for us to become involved in, we can talk through with you why it doesn't meet those guidelines. But don't ever lay your head down on the pillow at night wondering if a child is safe if you know you can pick up the phone and do something about it. We will gladly assist you.
People who do call you, can they remain anonymous?
You can remain anonymous when you make a Child Protective Services report if you choose to remain anonymous. You are not entitled to any information about the report once it is made. If you make a report and you are named, you tell whoever's taking the report who you are, give them your contact information. We are required by law to send you a letter within five days that tells you what we are doing with the case. And then, once we make a case decision, we're required to send you another letter that tells you what our case decision was. Our staff also will contact that person during the course of the investigation to follow up on any other concerns they might have and see what's going on. So, we always encourage folks to let us know who they are, but they do not have to.
If they do let you know who they are, will that information be given to the people that they report?
We are not allowed by law to give reporter information to anyone unless we are ordered by a judge to do so. Reporter information cannot be revealed.
Mr. Chairman, Holly and her staff, I've served on the DSS board. Holly and her staff do a fantastic job as far as looking after kids who need to be looked after in Alexander County. And from the little bit I know, the problem, the real problem is not people who care about their children and want to see them taken care of. The problem is people who don't care about the kids and use them as a bargaining tool or whatever. And those are the cases that really get... I don't know anything about it other than what I've heard rumored, but those are the cases that really get ugly because you would think people would want to do what's right for kids, but that's not always the case. And Holly and her staff do a fantastic job. And it's easy to sit and say, "Well, they should have done this or they should have done that." But when adults are mobile and can move from one county to another overnight, it's hard sometimes for DSS departments to keep up with the children and what's going on with those children. So, as hard as they work, it's still a tough job with that small group of people who don't have adults, that small group of children who don't have adults that care about them.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I appreciate that.
I have one other question, too. And don't take this as a test question. It's something I want to know. If a child is reported for whatever reason, and obviously, we want to protect the child and we want to preserve the family unit, how many opportunities is that parent, guardian, given before the child is permanently removed from the environment?
There is no sound answer to that question. I think that you would appreciate that every family is treated as an individual family and we have to look at the strengths they have and the weaknesses that they have. Depending on the gravity of the situation, is the child immediately at risk of harm? Those are the things that we have to look at when we begin working with families to determine what action we're going to take. Some cases, we may go out on and we may immediately remove children from the situation if it's too dangerous for the child to remain in that situation. Example, a meth lab, an active meth lab, we would not allow children to remain in that situation. We do give parents the opportunity to make plans for their children to remain in their family with grandparents, aunts, uncles, or even friends that are appropriate in their network. And we are tasked to make sure that those folks are appropriate before those type plans are made. Some families we can work with for three months and they can do everything they need to do and we close their case and we never hear from them again. There are families that we work with for 12 months and unfortunately, end up having to file a petition and go to court to get the judge to order those families to do the things that they need to do. But it's just a case-by-case basis, depending on what the issues are and how willing and motivated the players, you know, are in that situation.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Y'all do a good job to be commended.
Thank you.
It's a tough job. I don't know whether it's appropriate for me to say so, but here a while back, we had an alert put out for two children in this county and that were not able to be found. And I want to commend the Sheriff's Department. I want to commend DSS and the highly professional manner that that was handled. You ought to be commended on a job well done. And I think everybody had done everything they could do before you went public. And the Social Services Department and our Sheriff's Department, our law enforcement personnel ought to be commended on a job well done. And I just want to say thank you to both agencies for the job that y'all did.
Well, we appreciate the support of the commissioners and our board. We are very fortunate that we have support all throughout the community. So, thank you.
And I agree with everything Mr. Yoder said. I do know Holly is passionate about her job and she cares very much for these children. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda, substance abuse awareness and our coalition. Call on Leigh Ann Wisnake, who is our Alexander County Health Department Director.
Thank you. And I will be brief. I really want to introduce an expert. I want you to be aware that there is a subcommittee working on substance abuse. Holly did a great intro for us. You know, the Health Department works to keep a handle on what are the health issues and what are rising to cause our families to not be healthy and have issues. And so, we keep hearing greater and greater numbers of substance abuse and particularly, prescription substance abuse. So, for a couple of years, we've actually had a colleague from Wilkes County that has been very successful to come over and do some trainings. And I'm going to ask him to share with you a little bit. He's done, has a PowerPoint presentation for you. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce Fred Wells Brason II. And he is the president and CEO of Project Lazarus, which is the project in Wilkesboro that has been very successful. It is a community-based opioid overdose prevention model that is reaching North Carolina and other areas of the United States, including the U.S. military and tribal groups. He also is project director for Community Care of North Carolina, a Medicaid management system statewide for Chronic Pain Initiative. And I could go on and on. He serves on many, many committees and task force, including Advisory Board for the North Carolina Controlled Substance Abuse Reporting System. He consults with the Medical Society on Opioid Death Reduction Task Force, many, many other projects. As you can see, he is very active and we're so fortunate to have him helping us because we do have a lot of things we're trying to do. And it's not just the Health Department. This task force is community-wide. It's going to take all of us. Too many groups, and many of them are here tonight to show their support. And anybody that would like to join us to help on the issue, this will not be an immediately... This will not be a quickly fixed program. So, we're going to... We meet monthly. So, anyone is certainly welcome to join us. They can contact me for that information. So, I wanted to let you know it's a large group working on it to make intervention. We're actually going to have our first national Take Back campaign for Alexander County, April the 28th. And you'll see more information on that, to take prescription medications from folks. A lot of people are starting to say, "Well, how do I get that out of my home safely so that it doesn't fall into the hands of their children and grandchildren?" And so, you'll hear more and more about that. But without further ado, I'm going to let Fred come up and show you some statistics and just how great the issue really is, not just in Alexander, but North Carolina and the U.S. So...
Thank you, Leigh Ann. And commissioners, thank you for...
And Commissioners, thank you for giving me the time this evening on this very important issue. And some of the information I'm going to share with you tonight on the, on the slide presentation clearly indicates that not only Alexander County, not only Wilkes County, North Carolina, and the rest of the United States is actually at epidemic level for overdoses from prescription medications, mainly classified as an accidental poisoning because those deaths weren't intended. What we've been working on in Wilkes County was essentially realizing the problem back in about 2005 and 2006, just coming together as a county, as a community, organizations, individuals, local government, hospital, Health Department to address the issue. Because we went to Raleigh, we talked to Washington, nobody had any answers. So, we just determined that as a community, we've got to address the problem because we have the issues of too many deaths and too many, well, prescription drug issues, both addiction dependents. And, and I want to clarify that some of the problem is not just individuals that have addiction issues. Some of the problem is people simply misuse their medication and unfortunately die because of that misuse, because of the potency of the medication, the medication that can't be mixed with something else. And if an individual or a patient is not aware of that information, unfortunately, they can easily overdose on this medication. So, our goal in Wilkes was to reduce the supply-demand diversion and of course, the harm, which is the overdose, from prescription medications. And I'm mainly talking about opioids. That's your pain relievers. There's, there's other controlled substances that can be mixed with that, mainly some of your mental health, your antidepressant, anti-anxiety medication along with that. But one of our goals initially was, yeah, we want to reduce the supply and demand, but we do not want an access-to-care problem. Because my, my, my background is home health and hospice. I was directing the hospice program in Wilkes County and became aware of this problem because I had patients where prescribers would say, I can no longer write a prescription to that household anymore because the drugs kept disappearing. And, and, and I have to admit that some of the patients were actually involved in that also, not just family members. So, you know, that's where I started to delve into this and, and look at the Wilkes County issue and realized how bad it really was. So, with that information, that's when we went to the community and said, we have a problem and we need to do something about it. And the data is strikingly negative in that category. So, that was the first thing that we did. And we've done the data from the state, from the local community to actually drive that issue. And that's some of the data that I'm going to go through tonight very, very quickly because actually, I've got 40 of your local doctors waiting for me over at the Baptist Church tonight because I'm going to meeting with them to go through all of this. Because we do work with the clinical medical side of this because everybody has to be involved. And, and most communities, you know, somebody's going to say to me, well, you know, if law enforcement would just arrest more people, we wouldn't have the problem. Or somebody will say to me, well, you know, doctor, if you just wouldn't prescribe so much, we wouldn't have the problem. That's not going to solve this whatsoever. Because no, neither one can control what happens with that prescription once it walks out of the pharmacy door. That's the behavior of the individual. And that's where the community has to come in to change our behavior, change our mentality, change our mindset on what we do with medication and what we shouldn't do with medication. We can go to the next slide. And of course, we know the issue. It's, it's in the headlines all the time, both in the, whether it's sports, whether it's Hollywood, and then, of course, it's in our community from individuals that are neighbors, friends, and family. Next slide. So, we're doing community forums. We held one here quite some time ago. We were actually able to procure $10,000 for your Health Department to start to address this issue and to build this coalition so that every community sector was engaged and you could start to do some programs on the home front to address the issue. So, we're looking at the data and the next slide, we'll start to walk through that. This is, well, it's, this is 2006 to 2009. Normally, this slide would go from 2000, 1999 to 2003. And you could, you would see that a lot of the counties were white in that category. The darker counties in this picture are those counties with the higher overdoses from unintentional accidental poisonings that the individual did not intend to die. Suicides are not in these numbers whatsoever. And if I showed you the progression of that, you would see on this graph, from 2003 to 2010, 2009, we have been in a steady increase in North Carolina and the United States. If you look at, I believe it's 2004, 2003, the Center for Disease Control out of Atlanta determines that an epidemic is eight people dying from the same cause out of 100,000. So, in 2003 and 2004, our state hit that epidemic status. As of 2008, the injury in the United States that causes the most deaths that has finally, well, not finally, but had now has exceeded automobile fatalities is prescription drug overdoses. And that's in the entire United States. Thankfully, in North Carolina, we did drop in 2010. We have to wait and see if that's going to continue. Hopefully, it will, but we are still above epidemic status and one of the higher states in the nation within that category. Next slide.
Do, do you have any numbers for Alexander County?
You will, we will get to those.
Okay.
Yes. This is Wilkes County. That's why we had to do a problem. If the United States and North Carolina is at 11.5, 11.8, Wilkes County in 2009 hit 46. In 2007, we were the third worst county in the United States based on per capita for overdoses from prescription medications. That's not a billboard you want on the side of the road coming into your county. And then, in 2008, we, we were listed at number six and that's the last year for national data. Next slide. Next slide. So, we're seeing here, Alexander and your neighboring counties, Burke, Caldwell, Catawba, and Iredell. And these are actual deaths, not rated. Most counties are getting rated at 100,000. And you can see Alexander peaked at about 13. They're in 2009, dropped a little bit in 2010. But when you look at overall these counties, you can see the progression pretty much has been in upward movement for those overdoses, the annual deaths in, in, for those individuals. In Wilkes County, it's been anywhere from age 17 to 72, you know? And it's all population. So, there isn't just somebody that you can point to or one group and say, it's them. We have to work with them. It's across the board. Next slide.
What's the source of these statistics?
This is through the North Carolina State Center for Health Statistics, the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner for North Carolina, the Controlled Substance Reporting System for North Carolina, which is the database where all controlled substances, by law, every pharmacy has to download that information on every individual they dispense a controlled substance to. And it's also from the Division of Public Health. So, this is all state data and also from the NC Detect System, which is all the data for our emergency department visits and hospitalizations in any category, but mainly substance abuse, mental health issues that we're able to track.
So, an autopsy would reveal this person died from the drug?
Correct. Yes. This is, yes, strictly from the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner. It's listed on their death certificate what the drug is and it may be more than one. So, that's the data that we're able to pull now for each and every county. We can actually profile every county and track this data on a regular basis. The black line that you're seeing here is the North Carolina average. So, you can see Alexander, Burke, Caldwell, Catawba, and Iredell are all above that average with Alex, with Burke essentially two times and then Alexander, not much behind that.
Question.
Yes.
That shows number of deaths per 100,000.
Correct. That's how, yes.
Alexander, that's 18.8. Our population is about a third of that. So, is our actual deaths a third of that 18.8?
It, it's a little different. The previous slide that I was showing you shows you the actual ones. When the, the graphs are going to the left to right, that's your actual deaths. And then, to determine how we can compare counties, some counties have over 100,000, some have under, you divide the, the number of deaths, the actual deaths, by your county population, and then you multiply that by 100, and that brings everybody out rating the same way so that you can compare them, which is why, you know, you're at 18.8 because you were at about, you know, 12, nine individuals that died. Next slide. This is a quick study that's done, not a quick study, but it's a done, a national study that's done every single year. First question is, have you, are you taking, have you ever taken a prescription drug not prescribed to you? If the answer is yes, second question is, where did you get it? And they answer, 55% said they are taking a prescription drug that's not theirs, they get it from a friend or a family member. Another 11% said, I did and I bought it from a friend or a family member. And another 5% said, I did, I am, and I stole it from a friend or family member. This tells us that 70% of the people that are diverting and, and abusing medications, prescription drugs, are getting it from a friend or a family member, bought, stolen, or shared. That tells us that internet shopping is part of it, going to Florida is part of it, doctor shopping, going from doctor to doctor, emergency, emergency department to emergency department is part of it. But most of it's in our backyards, in our living rooms, in our bedrooms, in, in our, in neighbor-to-neighbor, friend-to-friend is where most of that is, is unfortunately obtained, which is why Leeann was talking about a National Take-Back Day. That's getting people to empty their medicine cabinets from, on medicine that they no longer use. Because if it's longer it sits there, you're tempted to take it for something that it might not be, you know, used for, or other people are going to get their hands on it, whether it be kids or adults. And unfortunately, now, many of our communities are realizing, you know, one pill can fetch up to $25 to $50. It averages about a dollar a milligram on the street. So, it's become unfortunately for some a business, both to feed their addiction or to pay the bills. But unfortunately, with the medications we're talking about, one pill can absolutely kill somebody. And that did that in the quarterback in Burlington, North Carolina, back in the fall. Friday night, he had the best game of his high school career. They won the game. And on Saturday, he took one pill from his grandmother's methadone vial that she took for pain that was prescribed to her, and he did not wake up Sunday morning. That's the kind of issues that we're dealing with, with this medication, which is why we're doing public education, not just medical education. Why we're working with law enforcement and others, because it does take the entire community. It does take the entire village to address the issue. Next slide. The prevention program that we're working on, next slide, that we started in Wilkes County is the, the Chronic Pain Initiative. And this is how we're working with local prescribers, emergency departments on how to manage chronic pain patients, which are the population that is prescribed most of this medication. And what we're working with and what we, we've produced is a primary care physician toolkit, an emergency department toolkit, and a care manager toolkit so that we can case manage those individuals, not only within the Medicaid population, but within the general population by essentially locking them into one pharmacy, one doctor, that they can't go to other doctors and other places for that prescription. And we're now training all of the doctors in North Carolina, in every single county, every single hospital, every single practice, every single emergency department on this initiative. The state's paying for that. It's already underway. I just, I only live 11 miles up the road, but it took me 310 miles to get here today because I had to go to Raleigh. Because the Medicaid system is rolling this project out among all healthcare, community healthcare networks and, and all the practices through all the hospitals, through the Hospital Association and the emergency departments. But the community has to be engaged.
When did this initiative start, this broad-based?
We started this in Wilkes County in 2007, really kicked it off in 2008. Last year, we put all of the collaboratives together, wrote these toolkits, and we just started rolling this out in February. We started the training. So, it is just getting underway, but it's going to be on a rapid pace because now we have the system in order to do that. And part of that's starting in, in Taylorsville, you know, tonight, when I go over and meet with your doctors. Next slide. This is just a quick graph on the results of the Chronic Pain Initiative. The black is the much improvement, single prescriber for those individuals, single pharmacy, number of prescribers was changed, number of phone calls and complaints were changed, number of emergency department visits for this population, once they came under case management changed. In other words, Wake Forest came in, evaluated, evaluated what we did in Wilkes and said, we changed medical practice, but we did not create an issue where people couldn't get care. We just put boundaries around it and made it more stringent so that if they were receiving prescription medications that are a controlled substance, they are going to come under review, they are going to be monitored, and they can't keep going from doctor to doctor or emergency department and emergency department to do that. Next slide. And of course, the rescue treatment, I'll, next slide, talk about briefly. We, we are a pilot in Wilkes County. There is an antidote to an opioid overdose. And that antidote is called naloxone. Narcan is the trade name. Emergency departments use it, EMS use it. If I was showing up, EMS picked me up now and I was in an overdose mode, they're going to inject me with naloxone. My question to the state medical board was, well, Wilkes County, people aren't making it to EMS. They aren't making it to the emergency room. They're dying at home. So, why isn't this available in the homes? Why aren't they being educated about overdosing, what it looks like, and how to take their medications better? Next slide. So, the North Ca, back that up again. The North Carolina Medical Board said, we agree. So, we are the first pilot in the country to do that. I can tell you, that little blue box that was just in that picture is what we're passing out and dispensing in Wilkes County. Fort Bragg is now dispensing that to active-duty soldiers because they are on high levels of opioid medication and unfortunately, overdosing unintended. So, that's being done at Fort Campbell and at Fort Bragg, and now the Cherokee Indian Reservation has adopted the same program that initially started in Wilkes County. And we're hoping then that the rest of the state will follow as we develop the protocols to do this among the medical community so that people can be safe and we can reverse overdose and get them some help. The evaluation on the program, next slide. We have seen a 69% drop from the worst of the worst in, in Wilkes County of those overdoses from prescription medications. Our emergency departments are down, visits for substance abuse and overdoses are down 15%. We went down 15%. The state went up 7%. Our prescribing levels have basically stayed the same. That's the purple graph that's on there. So, it, it tells us that people can get the right medication for the right reason, the right diagnosis, and do it safely. And we can eliminate those who are abusing the system for whatever reason and, and, and get them into treatment and other venues that, that they need to be in. And of course, some obviously in incarceration because they've turned the business out of this. One of the things we were able to do was a study in Wilkes, and that's the bottom graph, the, the orange one. We looked at the script history of those who did die. Where did they get that prescription? On average, 25% did not have any script history whatsoever, which means they got it from a friend or relative of somebody else. The other 75% did. We took the script from their, their history, looked at the autopsy. If those two matched, 82% in 2008 came from a Wilkes County prescriber. 2009, 25%. 2010, 10%. 2011, zero. The individuals that are seeking to abuse the system by a song and a dance and an act or whatever it is to get that medication now have to go outside of Wilkes County to get it. When we tightened our emergency department prescribing policy for prescription medications, mainly opioids and other controlled substances, in nine months, I got a call from Hugh Chatham Hospital in Surrey, and they wanted to know why all of our Wilkes County residents were showing up at their emergency room. Because they couldn't get it here, they were going over there. They adopted the same policy. So, now, that's the emergency department toolkit that we are now giving to all 149 hospitals and emergency departments in North Carolina through the Hospital Association and the North Carolina College of Emergency Physicians. So, everybody's prescribing the same way. The issue is, when we do this, there are individuals that need help that do have addiction issues. And that addiction is driving them uncontrollably to do things that they would not have even imagined in their life before, which means the behavioral health and the treatment facilities have to step up at a higher level because those people are going to need help when they can no longer get a source for that medication, because we don't want them switching to something else, which unfortunately is part of the reason why we see methamphetamine on the rise and some communities have already seen heroin on the rise. But for the prescription drug issue, the Wilkes County Initiative is showing us that there are things a community can do if the community comes together to do it. Educating parents, educating kids, doing some work in the schools, our youth groups, our faith community, understanding and knowing addiction and how to support those who do have the issue, how to support families who have family members with the issue, and then working with your medical community. Your law enforcement with some of that grant money for your, your sheriff's office and your town police department, we sent them to diversion training over in Tennessee as soon as we got the money. You know, and they did that probably over a year ago. We're now with the SBI, bringing more diversion training for all local law enforcement, no cost to the police departments. Just come, eight-hour certified course so they understand how to delve into forgeries and, and other methods that unfortunately, individuals are now doing with prescription drugs.
Maybe you'll, you know, obviously touch this, but what about the school, the student education piece? Are, are we there yet or are we getting there yet soon?
I, I know it's been talked about here. I, I'd have to, yes, it is being done. Leeann's telling me that, yes, yes, it is. And we supply resources and materials and curriculum so that schools know exactly what can be done. Because, and I will tell any parent this, if your child's moving from elementary school and if you go on YouTube now, fifth graders are telling other fifth graders how to do it. But, you know, once they get into middle school, they're going to see it and they're going to know it and they're going to be asked about it, unfortunately. And most of that's coming from grandma's medicine cabinet. That's the sad part. Once they get into high school and they're driving, then it's other sources that are coming in. coming in. So it is being shared on our buses, it is being shared in our schools among students, and that's a very, very difficult thing to police, you know, because you just can't see it and you can't smell it. But it is going on, so we are intervening in every sector that we can, and helping, you know, Alexander County do that. Next slide. I'm not sure what's left. This is just our website, projectlazarus.org. Next slide. That's who we are, some of us. And next slide. I think we're about done. Part of the reason we do this is Casey Reeves. She was a North Wilkes High School cheerleader, graduated, got into some trouble, got an addiction, tried to get help, couldn't get help, they couldn't place her unless she had $6,000. She went through withdrawal, cold turkey, on her own with her mother, but nobody told her about cravings and triggers and life issues and dangers of body tolerance changing with that medication. Went out on a Friday night with an old friend, gave her one pill that she used to take. Her body had changed, couldn't tolerate it, and she did not wake up Saturday morning and her mother found her there. And I know that's happening in Alexander County. Yeah. So that's why we're doing the education piece, working with the prescribers in your community to change what we're doing overall, while still providing care to those individuals that need it in hospice, home health, and other avenues.
When I see and hear a presentation like this, I always think of, and most of you remember Len Byes, who played basketball for University of Maryland. And shortly after his career was over at University of Maryland, he died of an overdose of cocaine.
Yep.
And of course, I saw him play his last basketball game at Chapel Hill. But I always think of him, you know, what a waste.
Yep.
And so that's what it gets down to.
Yep.
To help save a life.
Right. Absolutely. And that's what this is all about. And that's why the state is rolling out this initiative, because our deaths are way too high. And it is costing money, but the bottom line is, one life through an injury such as this doesn't need to happen. And there's many avenues I could talk about, and you know, when you talk about, you know, your child abuse issues, the number of babies being born in North Carolina with a chemical withdrawal, dependence issue because mom was addicted, is now astronomical. 113% from 2004 to 2008.
Wow.
10% of our babies in Wilkes County in 2010 were born with that issue and had to be hospitalized to be weaned off the drugs that mom was taking.
Are you seeing meth as one of the most explosive drugs out there, or is it prescription drugs?
It's still prescription drugs, though, with the one-pot method and the easy way to make methamphetamine now. We are seeing that on the upswing. For years, we didn't see it so much, but it's back up on the upswing. With pseudoephedrine having to be behind the counter now, and an ID to be shown to even ask to get it, that's going to help eliminate some of that. But unfortunately, when you've reached your limit, you tell your friend to go in and get some, and then you have that issue. But as of March 1st, for a prescription drug, controlled substance to be picked up at any pharmacy in North Carolina, the individual picking it up must show a state ID, license, passport, or a state-issued ID. That's going to curtail some of that.
And you mentioned one other thing, and I know my medical training when I was in the Navy, a term that I'll never forget is synergism. One pill taken with another pill, or taken with alcohol, the deadly effects that can have that the user, if they don't know that, what the impact can be.
Absolutely.
So we studied the synergistic reaction between medications before they were prescribed.
Yeah. And unfortunately, the general public doesn't know that so much.
Right.
You know, and that's why part of the system that we're doing, so the doctor can talk to doctor and see a patient's prescribing history, and be able to look that up, so that they can see what the patient may be not be telling them. Because you might be seeing one doctor for your pain legitimately, but you really don't want to talk about the psychiatrist that you're seeing, who's giving the antidepressant or anti-anxiety medication. But when you start to put those two together, you're looking for trouble. You're looking for problems.
Mr. Brison, you should be very proud of what you've managed to accomplish, and the other people there in Wilkes County that have helped you. And we do appreciate you coming to Alexander County and helping us with our program. I know we do have some problems. Everyone knows that. If you're listening or watching this on TV, you know, grandparents, parents, keep your medications out of reach.
Locked up.
Throw your old ones away. Go to the Project Lazarus website. And I'm sure they can maybe get in touch with you, or get some hints there of what they need to do to take care of their medications. And, you know, you should be very proud of the fact that you're saving lives. And you make, you know, this group and what you guys have managed to accomplish, you'll, you know, you'll never know how many you have saved, but it's one of those things that will go on and on and affect many lives, many families.
I appreciate that. But essentially, it was the community that's done it.
Well, I congratulate you, too. I was just thinking, also seeing your thinking, I have friends who have family members who are undergoing these issues right now, and they're out of control.
Yep.
And they've been tried to be in substance abuse and in withdrawal training or whatever, but, you know, it just keeps going on and on and on. I just really empathize with those folks.
Yep.
But it's everywhere.
Yes.
It's everywhere.
And I certainly do applaud your efforts. It's people like you that's going to help us.
Anything we can do.
And programs like this, all that we, all that we do, and as smart as we are in 2012, but yet we still do the dumbest things. I'm a grandmother, I'm a great-grandmother, so what you've said to me, I'm already doing.
Excellent.
Because I've got teenage grandchildren.
We appreciate you being here and what you're doing, but if you've got 40 preachers waiting on you, you better hurry.
The first band was turned there waiting on you. LeAnn told me earlier, LeAnn told me at the board of health meeting, she said, "We need to get him out there, Larry. We need to get him out there."
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
I appreciate it. And what I'll be showing them has a lot more of the data, a lot more information than what we had time for here, you know, today. But I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
LeAnn, I just ask this question of both of you. When you do a session at one of the schools, like for example, Alexander Central, I'd like you to call me. I'd like to attend that session.
He hasn't grown up yet.
No, I just, I want to see how it receives.
Thank you, LeAnn. Thank you, Mr. Brison.
Appreciate it.
Now, you might give him some tea.
Fred has a police escort. How's that? As long as the blue light's in front, he said he was good. But I, actually, I would like to address that just for a second. It is tomorrow afternoon. I'm trying to pull out the recesses of the brain. I want to say, we, because we're working with the Ambassador's ballgame that's happening Thursday, actually, both middle schools are coming up to the auditorium at the high school tomorrow for a substance abuse prevention project. So we're trying in many, many different avenues, so I'll let you know what time. I want to say 1:00, but don't, don't have my calendar right in front of me. But one of the scariest things that we've heard doing our information is a Skittles party. You brought up having a teenager. Just, that made my heart stop, having a 15-year-old myself. One of the practices at teenage parties, they call it a Skittles party. And they tell each other to bring just pills. And so they go into parents, grandparents, neighbors, medicine cabinets, and just take a few of whatever. They put them all in a bowl, and they pass the bowl, and they take several. They don't know what they're taking. It can be opioids, it could be blood thinner, it could be blood pressure medicine.
Birth control.
That might not be a bad thing. But, you know, it's...
Let's move on, move on.
That's scary. You know, you don't know what outcomes you're going to have from taking two or three pills that weren't prescribed to you, so it's going to be an uphill battle, but at least we're making the effort, and it is going to take the entire community. So we're grateful that Fred's so close, and we're certainly over utilizing him tonight. Thank y'all.
Stay right there, LeAnn. You're number five on the agenda, too. The Alexander County Animal Control Weapons Policy. The Animal Control Center actually falls under the Health Department, so that's why LeAnn is here for that.
Yes. And actually, we bring this policy back to you just with those three additions that you recommended, and you should be seeing those in red. On page three, we added in, "In all situations, the animal control enforcement officer shall weigh the use of less-than-lethal instruments that would prevent the killing of an animal prior to using any deadly force." So we do, at all costs, try other options. That would be our last resort. Secondly, in red is the use of firearms against a person. Again, that would be at the very last resort, and only when their life was in jeopardy. And then on page five is the last one. If an animal control employee is taking any medication or has an illness that might impair their judgment or use of that weapon, then they would not be allowed to use that, in essence, is what we've added.
LeAnn, you've updated the policy, which is great. And you're going to cover the animal control personnel with these updates. How often are you going to update them? We used to have a saying in business, you had to tell somebody something eight times before they finally got it. Updating, telling is one thing, but updating and reinforcing this, because being an animal lover, I want to make sure that deadly force is the last resort, so can you address that?
Sure. We will go over the policy. They've all been involved in drafting the policy and working with that, but we will certainly review it with them. They review it annually, and they also participate with the Sheriff's Department in annual training at a minimum. And actually, they've been in training twice already on weapons and use of other alternatives first, and so they are getting many, many reminders. And I can tell you, the staff there work diligently to adopt and save as many animals as humanly possible. It's just the volume of animals that come in there, people would not believe how many...
Yeah. Please go get your animals spayed or neutered. It's very reasonable to get that done. You should not put that cost of putting down those unwanted puppies and kittens and other animals to the taxpayers of Alexander County. You know, be responsible and take care of your animals.
And we're also doing, twice a year, we do a reduced rabies vaccine clinic, and March is actually that month, so before spring and other wild animals are moving, you're outside around. I encourage everybody to remember and get your pets vaccinated. We have had several cases of rabies in Alexander County. We actually had a horse that was rabid this year, which is very rare, but does happen. So this is the month. It's a reduced cost to try to encourage people to do that. A good time to remind them.
You at one time had a reduced price for spaying and neutering, because I've had, I've had my animals done there before.
Yes, we still do.
Are you planning any more of that?
We do that continuously.
Oh, oh, that's great.
Yes. So you can call them. It's not just a certain time of year. We do that all throughout the year, and we work with all the veterinarian practices in the county to provide folks that option, because we don't want it to be based on, "You just can't afford it."
Judy's the one that had the teenage grandchildren. I have a daughter that's 42, so she's past the teenage years, which I don't think I could exist in that environment. That's why I lost all my hair and turned gray.
I tell you.
Mr. Chair, I mean, no, I won't entertain it. Make a motion, we approve the ordinance as presented.
Have a motion in the second?
I second it.
Is there a second? We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Back to the comment about the frequency. Please go over this, have it gone over until they can pretty well recite by heart when...
I'll have them memorize it.
When? Yes, ma'am.
I would echo that again. Once a year is not enough.
Any more discussion? There being none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, LeAnn.
Could I have two seconds to address the comment at public hearing? I promise, quick. I'm very sorry that the individuals could not get their hepatitis vaccine. Part of that is based on insurance guidelines, and I can tell you, not providing primary care and being small, many of the insurance companies will not allow us to get on their preferred provider list, and that's what has happened with that particular insurance company. And it is not because we have not tried. What we do in those cases is try to refer the individual to another provider that can do it at the best cost. We provide those all day long, but of course, our, since we could not build the insurance, it was going to be at our cost. So we try to refer, we refer people sometimes to the pharmacy. A lot of times, the pharmacies are being allowed to provide vaccines to increase access to them, but we just are not on the preferred provider list for many insurance companies, not because we haven't tried, but because they refuse. And insurance companies...
You would be considered out of network, is what you're talking about.
We would, exactly. And so it wasn't that we didn't want to provide that, but we just can't control what the insurance companies will allow and won't. And when somebody has Medicare and a supplement, the supplement has to be billed first, or Medicare will not pay. So we truly just could not.
At a higher price.
Well, there's always going to be...
We could, but it would have been private pay, which would be higher. So what we try to do is refer them to where they can get it at no cost, because we want you to utilize your insurance options. So sometimes it's their primary care provider that can do that at no cost and build their insurance, or sometimes it's a pharmacy. So we do try to just look at what's the best for each individual case, but that's why we were out of network.
LeAnn, I think it'd be really good just to write him a letter.
I will, and I will.
And explain that to him, because we have the name.
Actually, I'm going to try to make a phone call if I can.
That'd be great, whatever you need to do. I think just making a contact and somebody just taking the time out to totally explain...
I will. Because I wish I had, and actually, my staff did tell me about it and said, "We referred them to where they could get it at no charge." You know, and that's what we try to do. We don't want people to have a fee. But we also don't want people to not get the services that they need.
Need.
So, you know, there's been times when we provided flu vaccines at no charge because people did not have insurance, did not have the funds to do it. So our mission is to get people the care that they need. So I am very sorry for that.
Well, I noticed, Micah's taking notes. It would probably be good to put that explanation on the website, and I know from time to time, 860 has a program. It'd be good to get it explained, because, so people understand.
Aren't you getting ready to be on B- on B-86 for a show, or did you just do it?
I am ever so often. Nothing planned in the next...
Well, I never thought they had one that you were coming up for, something about...
No.
I thought it was about this Lazarus thing.
I'm sure we're going to.
Okay. I mean, maybe I got the cart before the horse. I apologize.
Good idea. We are really starting our campaign and really trying to get the word out of what we need to do in families and be safe, and the medication take-back program. I think that's going to be very successful. We're going to be at two locations, the Health Department parking lot on that Saturday, and over in Bethlehem at the Lowe's Foods parking lot. And you'll see things, we're going to put it in the newspaper on, at the radio. We're going to try to get the word out every way we can, so hopefully folks will get those old medications out of their medicine cabinet and out of those teenagers' hands.
If you're going to get into Bethlehem Star, you need to do that pretty quick, because you've got one more time.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, LeAnn.
I know you will, the peg channel, don't forget to... But LeAnn, just very quickly, I'd like to commend you and your organization, being relatively new to the commission. I always hear positive comments about you and your health department. I just wanted to pass that along to you.
I have a wonderful staff, people that care and are there for all the right reasons to try to help people.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Appreciate your support. Thank you. Now, off to the training. After this, you can come.
But you do not have escort. I suggest you run the speed limit.
I will. Thank you.
All right. Item number six on the agenda, request for position of the District Tech, North Carolina Association of, oh, just got, Alexander County Soil and Water Conservation District. Call on Bill Chapman and Lee Holcomb.
I'm Bill Chapman. I'm here on behalf of the Alexander County Soil and Water Conservation Board of Supervisors, Service Chairman, and we're here tonight on the invitation of the county manager. We have a position that is vacant. Lee Holcomb, right behind me, is the person that filled that position, and he has moved to bigger and better things. And we're here to request for the continued funding and for permission to go ahead and begin to advertise for this position. And Lee has put together some information, and I think maybe you have one there in your packet, and he's going to come now and make some points on some of that information. And we'll both be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for letting me speak on behalf of the Soil and Water Conservation District. As Bill mentioned, I was the previous technician, I was there for five and a half years, and now I've moved on. I actually still work with the county, with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, I served that position as the district conservationist for Catawba and Alexander Counties now, through the federal government. If you look on the handout you have present, I spoke briefly, I guess when the new Commissioners came on, I guess that was last year. But just a, a brief update as far as our office, there's two, two county people in our office. It is the Soil and Water Conservation District, we have one, Leslie Meadows is here, the department head, and the education coordinator for the office. And then the position that I had is the, we refer to it often as the North Carolina Ag Cost Share Position, is the technician that serves technical assistance to the farmers and rural landowners in the county. Through this basic technical assistance on, with farmers and rural landowners, as well as we operate these cost share programs that is most often discussed with my particular position that I held. If you look through other items of interest, you'll see NC Ag Cost Share monies, and I've listed some practices there. As far as livestock inclusion, that would be fencing the cattle out of the stream, providing an alternative water source. Any, any one of these particular best management practices to improve water quality in Alexander County. I listed that dollar amount since my tenure, that's a little over half a million dollars. And then I've listed some other things, at the very bottom, this would be the money that is currently need, needs to be implemented with the person that, if you choose to allow us to post for this position, at the very bottom, the fifty-three nine oh six. And then we have a, some grant monies we secured to close out two-way storage ponds on a, on a dairy farm in Bethlehem. Just to sort of drive this home, and I'll talk about the beginning part. If you total all this money up, this is including this bottom fifty-three thousand nine hundred six dollars and the thirteen thousand eight seventy-five. If we get that done this year, in six years, we brought to this county with, with landowners and farmers, six hundred and one thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars in six years. So I mean, that, that's quite a bit of money to bring to the county with one position. And so I'm gonna make a reference to that, you go to the very top. I guess the main point here to, to discuss is, with my position, it is half the state of North Carolina pays my position, well, roughly half. And then Alexander County pays half. Now, the county pays the full amount, but then they are later reimbursed from the state of North Carolina. So you'll see here, this is for fiscal year two thousand eleven. This is what we budgeted for this year, just for my position. That includes the salary benefits and then actual line items in our county budget, office supplies, travel, postage, and telephone. So you'll see what we requested, and then you see what we got. So the state of North Carolina reimbursed Alexander County, these are quarterly payments, by the way, it's not one lump sum. They reimburse us this technical assistance quarterly, forty-seven point seven percent. So what I did, for some numbers, just to, to throw out there. So if the county paid, see if my math's right, I guess that'd be fifty-three point three, is that correct? To make a hundred percent. So to pay for that fifty-three point three percent of my current position, two thousand eleven, that'd be the county that's paying twenty-six thousand five hundred twenty bucks for my position. If you multiply that six years out, that's roughly a hundred sixty thousand dollars. So if you look at the money we brought into the county, actually gave it to landowners versus the money it's cost the county, that's almost a ratio of four to one, as far as the money we brought in, and then the money spent from my position. I've been joining working with the county, and like I said, I moved on with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. I think the numbers speak for themselves, with agriculture being the number one source of revenue in the county. I think this position is very much needed to be, be filled.
Got a question. Lee, I read the minutes, because I like to keep up with what Bill's doing. Give us a brief, in a nutshell, the job you do. From what I understand, you basically help farmers, dairymen, beef growers, poultry growers, anybody who's entitled to participate in up there, you help them put the plan together, would you give us a?
That's, that's correct, the, the main, I guess the main responsibilities of the district and USDA is conservation planning. That's our, that's our, you know, it's our cornerstone, that's what we base everything off of. So it's as simple as, as a farmer, say, you know, like, like Mr. Robertson was saying, beef cattle, dairy farmers, anybody involved with agriculture, can call us and say, hey, you know, I've got some issues I'm dealing with, I know I don't have the expertise to deal with it. Could you come out and let's just go over the farm, the whole entire farm, you know, addressing forestry, beef cows. They got, a lot of people have beef cows and chicken houses. So discussing their overall conservation plan, whether it's addressing erosion control, say with stormwater from their chicken houses, grass waterways in a crop field, persons, even if they're doing no-till production, you still have some stormwater from other areas. Going out there and offering technical assistance for installing some grass waterways, even basic assistance. I mean, there, there's a lot of folks that call our office, farmers, that, that can't really, you know, read their, they can't really interpret their soil samples. So something as basic as even a landlord coming by the office and saying, hey, I've got these, these soil sample results. Can you tell them to me in layman's terms about what I should do with this? So really, I mean, it's, I say the position is a, a jack of all trades, a master of none. You have to have a, a really broad skill set as far as surveying, civil engineering, soil science, biology, botany. There's just a lot of things to understand, and it's a really neat job to deal with that and deal with the rural landlords in the county and offer them some form of guidance, to sort of be that person that helps them go in the right direction, or at least give them outlets to contact folks to maybe solve some of their resource, resource problems. Hope that somewhat addressed it.
I'm sure the farmers know what you're talking about.
Well, just let me say one thing, Lee. Before any farmer's eligible for any of the cost share money from the state, they have to have a conservation plan on their farm. And Lee puts together that conservation plan, then if there's something that they may qualify for according to their ranking here in the county, then he works with the particular plans for their farm of what is gonna be done through or with that cost share.
Let, let me ask this question, and what you say you do, have done is great, but I have a question, and Bill, maybe you can answer this question. An emphasis that I'd like to see, and I know you've done some of it based upon some of the things you've described here. But is stormwater runoff in relations to pastures and streams and chicken houses and stuff like that? With all this stuff that's getting in our drinking water systems, we need to be very mindful and protective of that. And I'd like that to be an ongoing, maybe, you know, greater emphasis on what this technician, if we decide to fund it, does.
We, we do have, we have to submit a strategy plan, annual strategy plan, to the actual Division of Soil and Water Conservation in Raleigh. And based on the board, there's five board supervisors that serve the, the, the district. And we have a parameter form where each year you can change or adjust or completely wipe out and, and change anything on this ranking form. When they come in for financial assistance or through these cost share programs. Currently, as of program year two thousand twelve, we focus mainly on waste management, because obviously poultry is the leading industry in the county. So, and we are seeing more issues with stormwater management, not from a traditional standpoint, where a city's gonna deal with impervious service. We're dealing with impervious service of these, you know, four and six and eight house, chicken house installations. Matter of fact, we're getting ready to do a grass waterway on a crop field, where it was just a crop field, now it's got six chicken houses on it. And that stormwater now has, has got a gully, you know, three or four feet deep. We'll try to maintain that as our yearly strategy plan, trying to address those, address those issues.
That's good.
And a little bit in addition. You know, there's, we have what we call BMPs, and that's Best Management Practices, you know. And in them BMPs, buffer zones as far as where streams are concerned, and, and chicken houses cannot be located a certain distance from the stream, you know, and then to control that, that runoff. And part of, one of the biggest things right now is litter storages for poultry farmers. They have to clean those poultry houses out at certain times, and if the weather is not conducive to being able to spread that litter, then they need a building to store it in, to protect from
Runoff.
Some of the big rains that we've had carrying it, the runoff, the result from it. It's a, in a lot of different areas, you know.
What you're saying is, you do emphasize what I.
Yes, we do, yes.
Just as an aside, I live on Lake Hickory and have for about thirty-five years, and I can just look at the lake and notice the difference in the water quality.
It's usually the humans that are messing it up, not the cows.
I started saying it's not farmers.
Cows are better mannered than most humans.
The streams go into the lake.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve this for the, them to go ahead and move for the, the human resources and the county manager to go ahead and publish this, post this job, so that they can move on with it, I understand it is budgeted.
I'll second. Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
Just got one other question, about how many of our farmers, poultry, dairy, beef, use, or have used?
Let me address that, Darrell. In about, about in nineteen ninety, O-two-hundred regulations came about, and they were water quality regulations. And every dairy farmer in the county that milked more than a hundred cows, and that was probably seventy-five percent of them, fell under the O-two-hundred regulations. I don't know if I'd be in business today if it hadn't been for the cost share money in order for me to meet all the requirements that came about. And the year two thousand, I think, was whenever it all had to be done, and, and I was serving on the board then, and I said, put me at the bottom of the list, so no other dairy farmer in the county can say, well, you took care of him, he was on the board, you know. And, and I wasn't done, I didn't have all my stuff done whenever the deadline come, but it didn't take too many days to get it done. But then now, there's a whole lot of focus on poultry, you know. We don't have near the cultivation in the county that we used to have, and I haven't, I haven't hooked up a bottom plow to go to a field in probably fifteen years, and I never plan to hook up to another one, you know. No-till has reduced the amount of soil erosion tremendously, and chicken litter helps grow grass, and grass holds water from running off. Mr. Atwell Alexander, on a trip that some of us made, meeting in Morganton, said that fescue grass has kept more tons of topsoil from going down the Catawba River than any other one thing that's ever happened. And Darrell made a comment a minute ago that cows were cleaner than people, and that's the truth. And we've had the substance abuse, anything that will flush down a commode ends up in the Catawba River, and we get our water out of there. And, you know, that is pretty sad. I know more about what my cows eat than I know about what I eat.
Bill, that's why I mentioned the Top River, because that's where we get our drinking water.
That's right, that's right.
I would just add one thing, too, our cost share programs are word of mouth. With the amount of poultry industry currently, we, we have about twelve to thirteen people backlog on our applicant list, just because once they find out the program's available. We advertise once a year in the paper, but honestly, we cannot advertise and still have a backlog, probably for quite a few years now, just because of the poultry industry.
Yeah, and, and we don't, the state don't have the funding to fund us to do all that we need to do, but we do all that we can in a ranking process with what funds that we have. But a lot of what Lee does is not, well, it's indirectly tied to what you're saying, but there's no monies with it. It is just to provide assistance, technical assistance, to tell a farmer, hey, you could do this and this and this. Wouldn't cost you very much, and it'd be beneficial to you and to the general public, and for the benefit of water quality.
Any more discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, all those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, thank you, Lee.
Thanks for your time.
Were you wanting to say something else?
I just wanna say thank you to the board.
Thank you, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven on the agenda, solid waste amendment and solid waste enforcement. I call on Seth Harris, the county planner, and Josh Mitchell, solid waste director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up for your consideration deniers and proposed changes to the solid waste ordinance. Changes at the legislative level and the county level have made these changes necessary, and some enforcement problems we've been having. Hopefully these changes can address all of those. I'll hit some of the highlights first and then go into more detail on some more complicated things. First of all, we made the section regarding junk consistent with the zoning ordinance, that's on page seven, and I'll briefly go over that. We added, well, we made a simple change, actually, to the list of materials which are wholly or partially rusted, wrecked, junk, deteriorated, dismantled, or in operative condition, we added manufactured homes to that list, which has been an enforcement problem here lately. Metal prices are up, and people are stripping metal off of mobile homes and leaving the frame, so I probably have three of those complaints active right now, and Josh may have more. But anyway, we also broadened the violation penalties to be consistent with general statutes. Before this, the ordinance was pretty vague in our enforcement actions, we've kind of cleaned that up a little bit and made it consistent with the legislative changes.
Seth, would you please, since you just mentioned the mobile homes that are being stripped and left, the carcasses left, exactly what did you change to, and how did you change that one?
It's actually simple, there's a definition in the ordinance of junk, and to that definition of junk, we added manufactured homes which have been dismantled. So, and that makes it a violation of the solid waste ordinance, therefore we can act upon that. We kind of were doing it before, but it was one of those gray areas in the ordinance where it was implied, now it's specifically stated in here.
And the owner is responsible for getting rid of it, that carcass.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Legislature a few years back made recycling pretty much a given, a necessity, and that wasn't covered in the ordinance either, so we added that in there, that recyclable materials cannot be added to the solid waste stream. And we have recyclable, recycling containers at the convenience sites and at the landfill, so we make those available. We also kind of updated the definition of containers to make it a little more, or a little less general. We added that automobiles can't be used as containers for trash. We're having a lot of those, a lot of complaints about trash in the back of trucks and horse trailers. So pretty much any unenclosed device can't, cannot be used as a trash receptacle. Has to be enclosed, has to be rodent proof, and that sort of thing. Another change, we changed the requirements for multiple residential units to specify manufactured home parks, duplexes, apartments, and condominiums. It did address multiple residential units before, but it really didn't go into specifics. We added in there that if a bulk container is not provided, a sufficient number of containers shall be provided to hold at least one week's accumulation of garbage. We tightened that definition to cover those additional uses and to specify how much garbage they should be able to collect before they were in violation. And finally, we've had several complaints in the last few years about homes that were burned out, had storm damage, and then were left, not demolished, and were left and came an eyesore to the community. So on page thirteen, we added a section titled Casualty Damage Solid Waste, and I'll read over that. No owner, occupant, tenant, or less see of any commercial, industrial, or residential premises shall permit the solid waste from any building or other structure which has been damaged beyond repair by a fire, storm, or other casualty to remain on the premises for more than one year after the completion of investigations. That's the gist of it. And we, of course, was brought to our attention that sometimes insurance companies don't always pay on these things and within a year. So, you know, we could enforce this at our discretion, of course. That casualty damage is a tax term, that's pretty much anything that's damaged or destroyed by an unforeseen event.
That was a case, like the house on Rank Damn Road.
Correct, yes, sir. And on Church Road. And that's the changes we are proposing.
Well, some of these that you marked out, did you mark those out just because you thought they were antique? Or just marked them out because you didn't want to enforce them, or because you didn't like them, or because you got complaints? Or just marked them out because you didn't want to enforce them or because you didn't like them or because you got complaints? Why were they marked out?
They're marked out mainly because they were out of date, really. I mean, the ordinance still mentioned the old green bulk containers around the county, didn't mention the convenience sites at all. Uh, some of the stuff was antiquated, like it still referred to a county landfill, sanitary landfill, which the county doesn't operate a sanitary landfill anymore. We have a transfer station now. So those things were updated. There were a few things in there that were redundant or didn't apply anymore. Like there's a section about, uh, dirt from construction sites on roads, which is addressed by other agencies and that sort of thing. So that's what the struck out portion of the ordinance is.
Yes, it, uh, I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to know why.
All right.
You know. Seth, I have one question. It goes back to page nine. The fifty dot twenty-two B. Uh, a bulk container is not provided, a sufficient number of containers shall be provided. So at least one week's accumulation of garbage. What about the frequency of pickup? So if I've accumulated one week's worth of garbage, uh, let's say in a mobile home park, what's my duty, responsibility as the owner of that mobile home park or a resident of that mobile home park to get rid of it?
And it doesn't really specify that and we could sure look into adding that clause in there.
I think we need to.
Okay. Do you have a suggestion on?
Well, if it's, if it's, uh, one week's accumulation, they need to get rid of it and a specified period of time. Maybe you and Josh could get together on that and determine what that should be.
We can do that. Any other comments?
Any other discussion?
None.
Okay, what are you asking for tonight?
What I was going to suggest is that we, uh, put this on our website so that it can be, uh, people can review it and that we schedule another public hearing and, uh, action on it for our next meeting or.
Okay.
Because I think, yeah, like, uh, Darrell was saying, I'm, uh, I'm not mistaken, do we not have to have, we have to have at least one public hearing prior to making any type of approval on it whatsoever. Because it's changing the, uh, county ordinance.
And we can put it in a lot of places. I mean, the library, the county office, uh, uh, tax office, what have you. But, uh, put it, a written copy in those places, put a copy on the website and, uh, so people can review it. And if they have any questions, uh, they've got an opportunity to bring them up and, uh, you know, we, we'll see, uh, the comments before we, uh, and we'll have the public hearing in, uh, next meeting, I think, April second or.
Yes, sir.
Uh, have a public hearing then and if, uh, uh, take action.
No big changes, take action?
Yeah.
I agree. That's, that's a great idea.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Seth. Josh?
All right, kind of in conjunction with what Seth's talking about, uh, just want to say Seth's done a great job updating ordinance and, uh, a lot of times I deal with a lot of the, uh, enforcement type stuff. I got some slides here to just kind of show some examples of, you know, some of the average things that we deal with on a day-to-day basis as far as solid waste enforcement. This is some dumping off the side of a dirt road up in the north, uh, northeast part of the county. Uh, when I get a call like this, I go out, try to find some names in it. If I find the names in it, then I hold the, uh, the person responsible for the mess, that, hold them responsible for the cleanup of the property. So there's that, um, after I've gotten ahold of them, got them out there to clean it up. So next slide, uh, this is a property where, as you can see, uh, someone has piled up trash on the back porch. Dogs are getting into it and dragging it out across the yard. And then I go out there and do my investigation, find the pro, who, who the property owner is. Then hold them responsible for cleanup. Um, this is an old, um, mobile home. I got a call from adjoining landowner uh, that the back of the mobile home was over his property line six inches and he wanted it gone. If you can go back for just a minute there, Chad. As you, they've started, uh, scrapping this thing out for the, for the aluminum and the metal and stuff in it. Um, so I get out there and I was able to get the property owner to go ahead and get rid of that camper and get all the, uh, debris there around it cleaned up. All right, Chad. And so you can see the site there has been cleaned up. Next slide, uh, here's another property where people are just, uh, walking out from the house and, and piling up their garbage. You know, you can't do that. It's going to cause rats and mosquitoes and all kinds of problems and foul odors. And, um, it's all about being respectful of your neighbors and, and mindful of, of, uh, the environment, you know. But the next slide you'll see it's, it's pretty well cleaned up. There's a little bit of stuff left there and that old dog looked like he was coming after me pretty good, but. Next slide, uh, this is on another dirt road. Uh, this is some carpet and building materials. You know, something like this, not really able to find a name. So next slide, uh, this is the same, same area. And then here you go, uh, the DOT went out and, uh, helped us out on that one and cleaned that up. Uh, I got to say thanks to them. They're always a great help on stuff like this. This is just an example of some odd stuff. You see, um, this is over in Bethlehem off Tig Town Road. Somebody just whooped in this little drive and threw a printer off. Not really sure why you would do that. Uh, you can drop off electronics like this for free at the landfill. But something like this, I found a, a business tag on it, you know, Hickory Office Equipment, something, and a phone number. So I thought, well, maybe it's stolen. Called them and the guy said that, uh, that whenever they get done with their printers, they just sit them out back and let people come after them. So I guess so they can get whatever might be worth a little money out of them. Uh, but then they end up on the side of driveways in Alexander County. But something like that, I just cleaned up myself. Where's this one? This is another dumping on the side of a dirt road. Was able to find a name in this, uh, and got the folks. I don't think I have an after picture on this one. But this one's cleaned up as well. That's the same one. Go ahead. This is, um, property here right outside of town. As you can see, the mess there. Uh, I think I have an after on this one. Go to the next one. This is just where trash has been scattered all over the property. Go ahead to the next slide. And here you see where it's been cleaned up. Next slide, uh, that's the backyard area there. And that's all I have.
How long did that take to get that done?
To get that one done? Well, it took longer to track the folks down because there was some other circumstances with that property. It was a rental property and finding the homeowner, so that took about two to three weeks, somewhere in that. Some of them I can get done in a day or two. Some of them might take two or three months. You know, there's some that I've been working on for a lot longer than that, that you're just kind of at a standstill. But hopefully with this new ordinance, it's going to give us, uh, I guess, as they say, the teeth we need to maybe get a little more stringent on some of this stuff. But I just wanted to show some examples of kind of what we're up against and what we deal with and that. The, the most of them we do get cleaned up in a timely manner.
I think you do a great job.
Thank you, Josh.
Appreciate what Josh does and the folks at the convenience centers too.
Oh, yeah.
They do a good job and, uh, appreciate the signs. We encourage everybody to bring the right change when they go to the convenience centers. It makes everybody's life simpler.
Oh, yeah. Well, we have a problem sometimes with somebody showing up with a, you know, a hundred dollar bill for a dollar's worth of trash and, we just don't keep that kind of change around for, for, mainly for safety purposes, you know. So we, we encourage everybody to use the correct change. If you go there weekly, you pretty much know what it's going to cost you, so, um, try to be prepared, I guess.
Seth, thanks for your help too.
They're both great. And I'd like to encourage the public to, uh, do something about the trash on a lo, alongside the roads. I really don't like these white flags that say Food Line and Walmart and all that flagging me down as I go by on a briar. I think that's very, uh, shows disrespect of our people for this county, which we've been blessed with a beautiful county. And I would just like to encourage everybody to do their part. If trash is, uh, dumped on or near your property or it needs to be cleaned up, please just take it on yourself to do it because if it's to be, it's up to you. Because the, the county, the officials and Seth and Josh cannot keep this county clean theirself. We have to help do it.
Thank you. All right, Josh, just stay there. Your, uh, number eight on the agenda, announcement of Shred It Day on April seventh, two thousand and twelve. Josh Mitchell.
As you said, uh, coming up on April the seventh, the solid waste and recycling department and the county governor are going to sponsor a shred it day. Um, it's going to be from nine AM to one PM. Um, this is a great opportunity for the citizens of the county, uh, to come out and you'll be able to dispose of all your, uh, personal information bearing documents in a safe and environmentally friendly, environmentally friendly manner. All the paper to shred it is recycled, so you know I love that. So we're going to have two locations set up. One will be at the Alexander County Administration Building Parking Lot. All you've got to do is look for the shred it truck. We're going to have cones and everything set up, so you'll be able to see it. I'm going to get some shred it signs made. Uh, it's beside the senior center, um, and the, the physical address, six twenty-one Liledown Road. Um, the second location will be at the Bethlehem Park Parking Lot. Uh, Bethlehem Park is off of Tig Town Road. And the physical address there is two sixty-seven Bethlehem Park Lane. We encourage people to come out and use this, uh, take advantage. We don't offer it, uh, a whole lot. We've had a lot of, uh, demand for it here lately, so we thought, um, hey, let's go ahead and do it. Scott Ross was big in it and wanting to have one, uh, with the senior center. So, um, just wanted to encourage everybody to come out and, uh, take advantage of it. And once again, it'll be from nine AM to one PM at the Alexander County Administration Building Parking Lot and the Bethlehem Park Parking Lot. If you have any questions, you can call my office at six three two one one zero one or email me at jmitchell@alexandercountync.gov. With the help of, uh, Mr. Chad Ritchie back here at the IT Department, we've made a, a, I guess you call it like a little commercial or ad that's on the PEG channel. We've got information on the website, been in the newspaper. So, uh, just trying to get it out there the way we can so hopefully people take advantage of it.
Put it on Facebook too.
Well, that, the video of, uh.
Will go on.
Yeah, it's on there.
It's a great thing.
And, and that same information, the contact, if you have a solid waste complaint, you know, that you want to report or get investigated, you know, call my office at six three two one one zero one and leave a message because I'm on the go quite a bit, so.
And those people, can they remain anonymous? Or do they have to put down?
Yeah, well, if they're really pushed, you know, you could probably, but I try to, I try to steer away from any kind of trouble I can, you know, between two parties, so.
Got you. Okay. Well, uh, Josh, we appreciate everything you do. Uh, you try to keep this county clean. I know it's a big job and, uh, you do great at it. We appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Josh, I just noticed those pictures. If you can catch that Budweiser fellow, I think he's the one pulling all of that stuff out. I noticed it in several.
Yeah, it's probably more than one. Y'all have a good evening.
That's right.
Bye.
All right, uh, item nine on the agenda, board appointments and reappointments. I call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a few appointments and reappointments for tonight. Chamber Board of Directors, reappoint Rick French for one year. Planning and zoning commission, reappoint Jim Herman, two years. Voluntary farmland preservation board, reappoint Tim Glass, Wendell Kirkham, Eugene White for three years. And Wendell Kirkham was, as an ex officio. Veterans committee appoint Jeff Peel, Dr. Jeff Peel. And the Board of Equalization and Review, Ron Roseman for one year.
I make a motion, we accept his appointment?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item ten on the agenda, budget ordinance amendments number thirty-two through, uh, thirty-eight. Call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Alleged amendment number thirty-two is to increase the register, register of deeds automation and enhancement and preservation expense to complete the online index books project and to purchase vital records, uh, binders for the two thousand and eleven vital records. Funds provided by prior year register of deed receipts that are statutory, uh, uh, set aside for automation enhancement and preservation activities. Also to increase the sheriff's department budget for camera purchase with funds from the unauthorized substance, uh, tax distribution. Unauthorized substance tax distributions. Also to increase the health department budget for infection control funds. To increase the veteran service budget, uh, for veteran service grant. And to increase the DSS budget, uh, for the, uh, federal low income home energy assistance fund and the crisis intervention funds. Number thirty-three is to increase the budget for payment to the Sea of Hickory for cost of materials for the Carlton Howell Road water line extension project. Number thirty-four is to transfer funds from, from contingency to pay the final costs related to the data networking and infrastructure update project. Number thirty-five is to use funds set aside for parks and recreation improvements to add a lower trail at Rocky Face Park and to install fencing at the upper trail. Number thirty-six is to increase the dairy budget for proceeds from the fundraiser at Foe's Family Entertainment Center. Budget amendment number thirty-seven is to increase the sheriff's department budget for painting and repairs on the box truck purchased from the Iredle County Sheriff's Department auction in the spring of two thousand and eleven. State drug funds are being used for these expenses. Also to increase human resource budget for two thousand and eleven, uh, December two thousand and eleven fee to participate in the early retiree reinsurance program. And thirty-eight, the budget ordinance or amendment that was added was to budget for operating costs for the new Rocky Face Park during April through June, two thousand and twelve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, number eleven on the agenda is county manager's report and the, uh, sales tax report. Again, I call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items to mention. One is, uh, concerning the sales tax report, uh, update that we do every month. For the sake of time, I'll just summarize. The county is, right now we're running about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars ahead of last year's numbers. That's minus the fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars we have to pay to, uh, Article forty-two, hold harmless that's set aside for school construction and debt service. So we're still, uh, running well ahead there. Also, we've been working with our consultant engineers, McGill and the Sea of Hickory utility staff, and are now in a position to move forward with the two thousand and ten drinking water state revolving loan application. And with your approval, we'll go ahead and submit the letter to the LGC and start the process, which will be borrowing, uh, up to four million dollars. Actually, uh, actual number's three point two, uh, million dollars in low interest funds at two point four or five percent for twenty years. This is something we had discussed before. And also, uh, Scott Ross, our senior center director, will be retiring in July of two thousand and twelve. And we'd like to recommend moving ahead with advertising that position in April. And I'll be glad to answer any other questions about, uh, my report.
Anyone having questions?
I guess if we make a motion here to approve the county manager's report, that would take care of the request to.
Yes, sir.
For Scott Ross and also for the funds for the, uh, to apply for the loan.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the county manager's report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I'd like just a little bit of clarification. The, uh, if we got two million dollars, is it going to be used specifically for what, Mr. French?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Three dot two million dollars, you said four million dollars.
Yes, sir.
For the, uh, DWS RF loan application. That money is to be used specifically for what purpose?
One second, I'll give you that. It's to extend water lines on Blankenship, uh, Devil's Track, uh, Antique Town from, uh, over in the Bowman's Cutover. from over in the Bowman's Cutover Road, to add an elevated tank in Bethlehem. Also, is to replace the pumps in Bethlehem. Those are the major components. These will help the pressure situation in that area.
It's going to tie in some of those dead-end lines and help the pressure in certain parts of those lines.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
My second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. We need to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen point eleven to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
One motion that you can't discuss.